Okay, uh, six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting of the Trotter Township of Bedford Planning Commission to order, and if we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, universal, with liberty, peace, and love.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item here on the agenda, our secretary is not with us again tonight. Uh, so I'd like to motion to have Commissioner Brown be the secretary, uh, this evening.
Move, Port.
Yeah. That'll be a good idea. Uh, Kevin, you support it?
Yes.
Um, let's just do a both, voice vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Claudia, we thank you for taking the job again this evening.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, next item on, or excuse me. Roll call, please.
Um. Commissioner Billinson?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Artis?
Here.
Trustee McKay?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Suggles absent. Commissioner Brown? Here, and Chairman Stein?
Here. All right, thank you. Uh, let the absence report, show that, uh, truly did, uh, reach out and let me know that she wasn't gonna be here this evening. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be approval of the November eighteenth agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I have a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the agenda itself? Okay, seeing none, roll call on that, please.
Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes. Chairman Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Billinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Artis?
Yeah.
Trustee McKay?
Yes.
The, yeah? Motion there.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is gonna be approval of our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Uh, Kevin, and then support from, uh, Trustee McKay, it sounded like? Okay. Any discussion on those minutes?
No. Go move. Let's do those.
Uh, they're quite lengthy.
Yeah.
Uh, that has got everything in there that we did for both, both the public hearing and then, uh, the site amendment for, uh, Casey's. I guess there is one little correction. Uh, more of a friendly amendment than there is anything else on the very last page. Um, the word secretary is under where I sign. I'm sure it was just a formatting issue, or we should slide that over underneath Claudia's.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion or any items that anybody else clarified or saw in that there? Okay, all right, I will make the motion to approve the minutes with the friendly amendment changing the word secretary underneath, uh, the chair and sliding that over to, uh, the temporary secretary, uh, Commissioner Brown.
One second.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and roll call on that, please.
Okay, so Chairman Stein?
Yes.
Trustee McKay?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Billinson?
Yes.
Mr. Suggles absent. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes, and Commissioner Artis?
Yeah.
Six, yes, motion here.
No, I made the motion to approve them with the amendment. All right, thank you. Uh, next item uh, on the agenda is our building and zoning report. Cody, do you have anything exciting to tell us, or?
Nope, it's, uh, starting to slow down in my office for the year. I have knocked out the marijuana facility walkthroughs, my yearly walkthroughs of the currently open operating facilities, um. Lost a couple of them last year just with the way the industry is going. One of them I did do a walkthrough as one of the closed months, planning to reopen, uh, with new ownership and come to receivership recently. I did a walkthrough with our electron inspector as he went into his inspection to get their power turned back on, then off since I think May. Um, but other than that.
They're all good?
Hmm, yep.
Okay, and where are they?
We've got the dispensary over on North Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we've got, it's not operating, but they are still licensed, um, uh, grow up at Morgan and Hubbard. Um, we've got the Paisley and the Village, we've got a grow operation over on Forty-Eighth Street, Asen Farms. Um, we've got Potters, which their name, they've got new ownership now, their name will be changed soon, they just haven't thought of what it's gonna be. Um, over on River Road, and then Evolution, which is also facing a name change, they're the ones that they went through receivership, but they're also around for doing.
Hmm, will they be changing their name?
Yep, they'll be, they'll, new name, new ownership, everything like that.
Hmm, yeah, a couple of them.
Uh, Seth, I just have a question for you, uh, when, with the special land use, that runs concurrent with the land, no matter if there's a transfer of ownership or not. I assume we just need to be notified of the transfer of ownership. And then, I would assume, then it probably would be good practice for Cody to go over any conditions and, and whatnot that were attached at that time. Um, it's just as a good practice, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Right, I guess they used to do run with the land.
Okay.
So if there's a change of ownership, be aware of that, then also to recall that we are reporting the condition, the special land use approval and conditions on the, that's, yeah, we're starting to do that.
Yep, and we also require the whole new, like, finders, you know, with operation plans.
Okay, and all that other information to be updated?
Everything like that, all has to be updated and.
All right.
Or even if there's just one person of a ten-person ownership group sells, we require all that.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is because I'm sure that the two anyway, or the ones that are transferring a sale, I mean, would even predate you, you, you in, in your office, so. Uh, maybe finding some of that stuff might be a little bit difficult. It might be worth a, a conversation with the new owner, I guess. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be our liaison report from, uh, Trustee McKay.
Well, concurrent with what we just talked about, you know, the board approved that Mancing um, and Casey's requests, which was dice, and, um, we're, it's not published yet, but we are having a budget hearing next Monday at six P M. Um, it took a lot of panagling on scheduling.
I'm sure.
To get, to get us all to be able to be there, we wanted to make sure they're all there.
Sure.
And, you know, we're, we're going into it very cautious this year on budgeting. Um, state appropriations are expected to be lower. I suppose, I'm betting marijuana revenue will probably be lower. Um, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a toss-up as to how we're gonna, how we're gonna budget.
How to reconcile the books, as they say.
That's, you know, pretty flat, we're probably gonna be pretty flat.
Sure.
Overall, so, that's all, no, no requests, no, anything else?
Okay.
And the board also approved that, uh, Casey's gas station, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be, uh, public comment time, this is on agenda items only. We'll open that at six oh nine. Is there any, uh, comment from the public at this time? Alrighty, seeing none, we'll close that at six oh nine. All right, next item on the agenda is gonna be discussion of new business, uh, several items there tonight. Uh, the first is, uh, something that'll be the first time that we've discussed this here, uh, as, as a group, uh, uh, as a planning commission, is the discussion of the need for a data storage facility ordinance. This is something that I have been kinda keeping an eye on through the MTA and hearing and watching some of what's going on in the other townships. Uh, I've reached out to Seth a couple of times, uh, uh, over, over the last six months to, you know, do we, is something we need to look at, not need to look at? Uh, I think we're both of the opinion now that it's probably time to look at this, uh, as far as that goes. Um, I just had some, you know, relative, I guess, like talking points, or I guess concerns, you know, the two, two biggest concerns that I'm seeing, uh, you know, and these are relatively new to this area, um, but are, you know, the high demand for, you know, water in the hot months, because that's how they, you know, use the cooling system to keep the, you know, components inside cooler and whatnot, and then the noise, because that's a constant hum. Um, you know, and then, uh, just, you know, the strain on the, on the grids, uh, you know, and then, you know, a large chunk of land being used for, you know, that kinda thing as opposed to agricultural use and whatnot. Um, those are just some, some things, I mean, I've got a list of like twenty things here, uh, that are just stuff that I've seen out there as risk or concerns from, you know, residents and communities that are having to deal with this already. Um, Seth, do you have any, I guess, thoughts generally on, you know, needing to get prepared for this?
Um. Yeah, it's definitely coming.
Okay.
Okay, so, I let Mike know a few weeks ago that, you know, I thought this was something that should be on the township's radar. I was working with a, a developer from out of state who's here quite a bit, um, and they've got a battery storage application pending a conbus. And I just, you know, I do, just, my research in working with them, I knew that, uh, they did work with bad, uh, data centers. So I just kinda asked him, I said, hey, like, what's, you know, what's your experience, what, you know, where you, we, we see, what you're dealing with? And he said, do your townships have ordinances yet? And I said, no, he goes, you need one. And I said, okay. Uh, one of the concerns he gave me that actually I found surprising was, uh, these are really big facilities, and some, and he's telling me that some of the, uh, the companies that are doing these, the construction is being done by maybe contractors who, uh, don't have the type of experience maybe that is required. That was one of their top concerns that they told me, and I've never heard that type of concern really before.
Okay.
So, and, and earlier this week, uh, you know, there's a township that wanted, over on the west side of the, east side of the state, they wanted a moratorium on, or on data centers. They, they wanted it, they're gonna likely implement it, I don't necessarily think we're there yet. Uh, the, the, the whole reason why, like, with zoning ordinances, you have your zoning as your classifications, and if it's not listed as permitted for special land use, it's not allowed. So, some townships are concerned that if a developer wants to come in and you don't allow it, you're excluding it, and that's an exclusionary zoning plan.
Hmm.
So, I, I don't think the, um, at least in Bedford, there hasn't been any tells that there's a developer for data centers coming through. And over in that other municipality, they have a bunch of renewable projects where, you know, that should be on the radar. Uh, so, that's, you know, that's where it's at. When I look at ordinances, um, Rob's over in my office, he's general counsel with MTA, I know he's working on one.
Okay.
Or at least a draft one, I don't know where he's at with that, I know he's trying to put something together. What I've seen, what I've known about it is, I think we're gonna have similar controls, like on the standards, like to your battery storage.
Okay.
Something like that, as far as, uh, just something similar. Uh, the footprints of these projects can be very big, okay, uh, like, like four hundred acres big, where you could see data centers, like, I'm aware of some that were built maybe closer to like a hundred thousand or a hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, and others that are five hundred thousand square feet or, or better, so, you know, that's, that's large, so.
That's very large.
Yeah, and, and, you know, one of the, one of the, um, concerns is water usage and what's, what does that look like?
Hmm.
Uh, you know, I've, I've heard, uh, some, they might have their own water system or bringing it, I, I don't know, that, that's gonna, that's sort of the stuff that we still are learning about.
Sure.
And, uh, but, but that's, that's generally where it's at. I think there was a data center that went in in the saline area over by Ann Arbor, and I believe it got denied and then appealed, and then it was settled, okay, with the township. But that was for, looking, I was looking this up, uh, a two point two million square foot data center. So, I, I don't know how many acres would encompass a two point two million square foot
Wow.
building, but I would think a lot.
Twenty.
Yeah. So.
That's a lot of football fields.
So, that's, that's just something to, you know, when, when you see things like that coming out, I mean, that's, it's just to the point where it's not on our radar, you at least, I think, be looking at it, because those are some pretty big numbers, like, we thought five hundred thousand square feet was big, and now, you know, I see a number on, on here, two point two million.
Sure.
Those are massive.
I mean.
Four one nine two two square feet.
I mean, I definitely think it's something that as a commission, we probably ought to not just think about, but probably get moving on, uh, just, I mean, so, Calhoun County is very heavily, you know, renewable on, on the east side of the county. We're gonna have, you know, renewable here between us and Johnstown now. Uh, you know, I'm sure everyone's aware of the project in, you know, Richland, that, you know, who knows what that's gonna be? Um, you know, and it, there seems to be a pretty good correlation between if you've got a renewable project around or battery storage, you may have one of those around as well.
I'm expecting these to be.
Almost hand in hand, I would think, or maybe.
To an extent, yeah, because they're looking for those high voltage lines and
Sure.
and being able to tie into the, to the, uh, the substation, similarly how battery does, so, yeah, that would be.
You know, bo- both of which we now are gonna have more of, because of the, you know, substation that they're.
Fifty-two acres for two point two.
Okay.
Don't they usually require like a municipal water supply?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, I've heard a lot about that, sometimes.
The demands on the water would be.
It's, it's astronomical.
I don't know if it'd be something, they would have actually like build their own water system. Like, I've seen, like, very large developers do that, they build their own water. I don't know if that's something that they're doing, I really don't know a whole heck of a lot about that saline case, other than it went into litigation after there was denial, and then it got settled with, with the, with the township, so.
There's been a lot of controversy on that water part, um, um, even shows like twenty twenty have had different townships complaining about that with the water.
And the electricity.
Yeah.
I did a lot of work in that environment when I lived in Chicago, um, and I mean, they've got the A C blasted, like, I mean, you're wearing COVID now, basically. They have to keep all of those computers.
Cool.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So.
So it takes a lot of water.
Yep.
I think, given the proximity with some of the stuff that, you know, we do allow with regulation in our zoning ordinance, you know, battery storage and the, and the, you know, green energy initiatives, I definitely think it's probably a good idea to at least take a look at it.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah.
I would, I would venture to say, Seth, I mean, you know, uh, we partnered with you guys on the battery storage ordinance, uh, portioned in our, in our new zoning ordinance, I, I was very, very pleased with what your firm was able to bring on that. Um, you said you don't know exactly where Rob is at on that?
I'll check with him.
Okay.
Uh, but I do know he's working on it, and at least that, uh, the saline case, that, the developer is D T.
Okay.
So now we're starting to see in-state, it's not.
Not, not, not in-state, okay.
And it's, uh, yeah, I mean, that's a very large facility. To put in context, you know, some of the projects out here, I think the largest project in, uh, solar project in Michigan is in Lee Township, and that's eight thousand, I think it's eight thousand acres. Uh, this data center that they're building in Saline, it produces, it, uh, it will supply one point four gigawatts of, I, that just sounds like a really large number, I'm not.
No, yeah.
You know, so, like, this is the difference that, that you're working with.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just curious, are all those places, um, do, uh, building or planning to build in areas that were once farmland?
That's what it looks like, just because of the, the.
All the farms are going.
You know, it's not part of P A two thirty-three, so it's not part of preemption, and I don't know if it's gonna be, but so I hope that answers it.
I mean, I would assume that, that at some point, the state will get involved, just like they did with the renewables. Uh, I do not think it's a bad thing for us to get there first, just like we did last time, um. Or not, not first, but I mean.
A lot of firsts.
Be, 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 you know, just get there.
Starting with marijuana.
So, um,
yeah.
If it's okay with the group, I think that, you know, we should maybe think about, you know, bringing this, you know, maybe, Seth, do you think that there's, there might be a possibility of having something like a draft, like, just a rough draft to look at?
I think so.
Um, you know, there's, the other problem we're gonna fight, guys, uh, sorry, Seth, uh, is that there's not a whole lot of ordinances out there that are for these, like, this is, you know, e- everything is moving so fast now that, you know, I mean, what, what you have on your books, you know, really becomes somewhat, you know, irrelevant very quickly now, unfortunately, um, you know, so, uh, you know, we don't have a lot to, to, you know, pull samples of like we have in the past, um, so, I think that, you know, I don't know, we can be your guinea pigs if you want, Seth.
I, I, I mean, I see D T as a developer in that case, I, I work a lot with, um, D T.
Okay.
And I know their land use is turning quite well.
Okay.
So I think what I would do, I mean, be unrelated to that, I just do it on my own, call them and say, look, this is, this is something that, you know, we need to know, what is your experience, where, where are the plans or trends that you're seeing, and they'll, they'll tell me. Uh, at least the land is turning well, so I'll, I'll, I'll be able to get some more information.
Okay, well, and that's beneficial to have, you know, because, you know, like, we have to know where to start with our standards, and what we think, you know, what, where that line is, uh, between that and exclusionary zoning, so.
When you say they create their own water system, in, in what fashion, how do they do that? Are, are they putting from our?
The water, you see the, the water tower?
Okay, so they're pouring it from the ground?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen that.
And then there would most likely be chillers to re-chill the water.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, well, through.
So, yeah, I mean, with the technology advancements they have today, I mean, these are, you know, bazillion dollar projects, so having to put up a water tower is not anything to these people. Uh, but I, I do, I do think that, the, the fact that we are not necessarily, we don't have municipal water here in Bedford for the most part.
Right.
Uh, I don't necessarily think that is something that would deter, uh, you know, development, because, you know, there are, there are lots of ways to get you, get your water and, you know, like, you know, recycle it and, and everything else, um, so. Okay, well then, uh, why don't we just leave that as something that, you know, we'll maybe start taking a look at in January, um, and kind of keep everybody posted. Uh, Seth, do you have anything else you wanted to add on that in particular?
No, I, I think that's it for right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just thought it was relevant to bring that up so that, uh, you know,
Get ahead of it.
So we can get ahead of it and, so we can do another ordinance. How exciting. Mm-hmm. All right, uh, moving on, uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be review of Article Four, Sections four two five to four three two, Sections four three three to four four zero, and then Sections four four one to four four eight. Does anybody have anything? So, uh, the first set was, uh, the ones that I was gonna review. Uh, but does anybody have anything they'd like to add specifically on those, while I get to where I need to be here? Well.
Manufacturing.
Okay, um, so for these Sections four two five to four three two, um, we've got eight things on here, most of them are just cler- clerical in nature. Uh, we'll start with page thirty-two, Section four two five B. Uh, so if you read that, it says, see article titled Process and Procedures and Processes for Special Land Use Requirements. Um, I think we should add the article number in there, which is thirteen, Article thirteen.
Four.
Yep.
Hmm.
And then also, this will kind of cross over between that and, uh, Article Three that we're gonna, you know, talk about here in a little bit, uh, which was, uh, Shirley's, um, that we did go ahead and get some stuff written down on that. Um, there's a lot of crossover in here between what we're considering a permitted use and what we're committing, uh, clarifying as a special land use. And then the, the standards, like, so for instance, that is saying, you know, see, you know, special land use requirements for, for your standards. Well, I mean, yes, there are standards in there, but there's not specific standards to manufacturing. Now, manufacturing is a, is a broad, a broad, broad term there. But we, I've noticed that in several other places here where it says, see article titled, uh, Procedures and Processes for Special Land Use, but it's not something that's actually in special land use. So what I'd like to do is add, add the article number there, so they know exactly what, there's a number with it. Uh, I know, Tony, you had talked about that, you had seen that quite, quite a bit in here. Um, and then, I think when we get to reviewing Article Three, the table, I really think that we're gonna want to take some time, drill down on that, um, over our break, and just really cross-reference everything we have in that table that, you know, is it special use and do we have standards there? Um, so that everything is labeled correctly, and if it is a special use, do we need to develop any additional standards, or, you know, how, how can we bridge that gap of confusion, I guess? Um, so to me, when we have a special land use, anytime we have one of those, there's additional standards listed in the, in the article, so in Section four two five. Doesn't necessarily refer you to the processes and procedures of the special land use requirements. You know, those are the requirements for approval or denial, or, you know, approval with conditions. It's not gonna, you know, those are standards, but they're not specific to what the, what the, the section number is. So I just would like, like us to kind of iron that out. Does that make sense? Uh, so I noticed that in a couple of different places. Um, so I consider that half housekeeping the fact that we just, if we're gonna leave it that way, um, because that's what we decided to do, we need to add, you know, Article thirteen, the thirteen there, um, for, for clarification, and then, we just wanna really double-check and cross-reference that table between what's on the table and what's listed in Section Four, and if it's a special use, there really ought to be some correlating standards there. Um, for us to review with the process and procedures that we do for approving a special land use. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Um, the next thing I have is also gonna be on page thirty-two, uh, Section four two six. Um, so we have both a marijuana adult use and we have a marijuana recreational.
Hmm.
Um, so we've always had to, uh, even going back to the ordinances that predated the, the new one, we've always had them separate. Um, when we redid the marijuana, we decided to keep them separate at that time, that's, I don't know, probably almost two years ago now.
Yeah.
Or been a minute. Um, Seth, I guess, I guess I would just like your opinion. Do you feel like it's important to have just one blanket ordinance for marijuana, adult use, and recreational, or is it not, not a huge deal that we keep it, keep it separate?
Or is it the medical?
The medical, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My mistake, yeah. So the, the adult use, recommend, you have the medical, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Right now you have it, it is separate.
It is, it is separate, you know, uh, but, but, so it is separate but identical, uh, like literally everything is the same.
Yeah, it is.
And I think our thought process was, well, if you have somebody that, you know, especially at the time when we allowed for outdoor grows, if you're gonna have that type of license, you know, that may have a different set of standards and stuff, because the, the old ordinances were a little bit different. So when we redid it, we just, we said, well, we'll keep it how it is now, we'll keep them separate, so there's no confusion, but literally everything will be the same.
And I think too, uh, like, we, uh, I believe at some point we were going with these, these ordinances, you, you were probably on Zoom with us with Catherine from my office.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, some of the discussions was the state might be taking action, and that's why we didn't merge everything all at once together.
Correct, that was, that, you know, and at that time, there was a little bit of rumblings, as there always is, about, you know, gravel or marijuana or
Yeah.
anything else that they wanna take over, um, and that did not go anywhere during that legislative session, and I don't think I've actually heard anything about it since then.
No, so, um, you could merge.
Okay.
Like.
Does the commission have an opinion on that? I mean, you know, it is a little bit of work and having to reformat everything, I mean, the only thing that is, you know, really relevant is that if we do, you know, a, a special land use approval, we'll have to do both types for both types of licenses like we did last time.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's a little redundant for us, and certainly makes for a longer meeting, but, I mean, it's good practice too, I guess, so. Uh, it's just something that we had discussed before, uh, you know. So I just thought I would bring it up, just real quickly, I, I'm not necessarily of the opinion that we need to do it right now. Um, but I, I, I would be open to suggestions from the commission if that's something we wanna look into. It wouldn't be changing the ordinance, I don't think drastically, it would probably be, um, changing some language in both the definition and probably the. changing some language in both the definition and probably the general regulations to include both types of licensing, and then because everything else is same, we would just get rid of it, or we can just leave it how it is now.
Does the state license them separately?
Cody?
Yes.
Hmm, that would make me wanna keep them separate for a while.
Okay.
But that's just my opinion.
Okay. I I don't, I mean, there's not really a huge benefit to us. Uh, I just know that we, it it had come up, uh, in the past about maybe just, you know, making, making it one, and we did hold off because we, you know, thought maybe there'd be some, some state reg- regulatory stuff that we would have to work around, so then we would just change, we would just change them at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, because they license them separately, I'm good with just leaving them the way they are, up and until the state, you know,
I agree.
does do anything, and then at that point, we'll have to probably revisit it anyway, so that's probably a good time to just take, take care of it then.
That makes sense.
Okay.
On the.
Yes, go ahead.
This is more of a housekeeping thing, but.
Sure.
See here, it says Township Fire Marshal.
Yep.
Which is actually the title of, really don't exist.
Yeah, okay.
I have that in my notes, which I don't.
Okay.
I'm assuming Township Attorney would be, Seth? As far as where the licenses and all that stuff would be.
I mean, I think it needs to say just Township Attorney in general, cause you don't always know who your Township Attorney is.
Yeah.
Gonna be, I mean. Oh, okay, so change that Fire Marshal there, okay.
It's in several places.
Is it? Okay. So, so it's gonna be in the same place in the other?
Yeah, the other.
In the other ordinance?
Other ordinance has it too. Page forty, Section C, B, C.
Okay.
Confusing.
They're just limiting that part of the sentence, right? Don't you call it, just the Office of the Township?
Yep. Uh, the next thing I have is over on page thirty-four. Um, it's gonna be number five, five one there, um. So, property occupied by a public or private elementary or secondary school building providing education, kindergarten or any grades, uh, first through twelve, does not include home schools. My question to the commission, so we just had kind of an issue with, with that. Um, do we want to add the sentence in there? Um, in relation to how, where we're gonna determine it's gonna be at school? So, for instance, you know, the Michigan Department of Education website.
Some credit.
Or, you know, or however we want to, to, to do that. Um, no, I don't necessarily think it is a huge deal, but we did just kind of go through, through that, so I mean, we have it in there that, you know, it's, you know, an excluded use, we probably should have in there how we're determining what that, what, what it, what that is, um, just so that there's no further confusion on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and maybe it's something we've gotta look at a little closer, but just off the top of my mind, maybe something I'd recommend by the state.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I just, I use that as, I mean, that was probably much longer, we didn't need to be, as is my nature, uh, so yeah.
I think so.
Um, so what I, I think, I think we should attach something there, um, and what that, uh, what that needs to be, you know, we certainly can add that in there. Okay, uh, then the next item is gonna be Pages, uh, thirty-four, uh, thirty-six and thirty-nine, and that is everywhere within those two ordinances, the marijuana ordinances themselves, uh, where we have the language of the measurement of the buffers and how we're doing that. Uh, so we need to change that. We are gonna go corner, Cody, what is?
Uh, nearest corner of supporting structure, or nearest point of supporting structure to supporting structure.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll change.
I got the, it corner, but nearest point of supporting structure.
Okay. And that will get us in line with a couple of other places where that's how you determine that within the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then again, Pages forty-two, forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-nine, and four two seven, all need that same language change of the measurement of buffers, so all, uh, all seven of those are specifically on how we're calculating the measurement of the buffer. So we're gonna change all of that to the same language. Any question on that?
Page forty-two through what?
Uh, page forty-two, forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-nine.
About forty-one.
Change those numbers.
Uh, I gotta get over there and take you down.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, if we go back to page thirty-three, and you go up here to see application and approval, and we drop down here, and it says, planning commission shall recommend granting or denying the application. If that's something that we're doing, we're, we're, are we sending that to the board?
Okay, hold on, I had, I had Kevin asking me a question. What was, no, no, you're fine. Uh, what was, what did you, can you, can you give that to me once again?
Okay, so if we go to page thirty-three.
Okay, thirty-three.
We go to, um, see.
Okay.
Application and approval.
Yep.
And then you drop down and it said, following such hearing, the planning commission shall recommend granting or denying the application. Are we sending that to the board? Is that gonna stay the same?
So this is, um, something that I can touch on in when we review Article thirteen, but I can also touch on it now. So several places throughout the zoning ordinance, uh, it was the intent of the planning commission when we redid the zoning ordinance, that, uh, the approval process for both the site review and or the approval process for any application for special land use would rest solely with the planning commission.
Okay.
So several places in here, it says, just the planning commission. Uh, over in our process and procedure in Article thirteen, it specifically states in one area that will recommend to the board approval or denial, and then a couple paragraphs later, it says that we have, have, have the total control. Um, or not control, but the, I guess, the, the say, the authority, I'm sorry, um. So that is a change that, you know, uh, I, I think we're going to push for, uh, taking that out in Article thirteen. Um, so Claudia is just bringing it to our attention now, early, uh, that, you know, here in this situation, it's specifically referring to the planning commission, so uh, when we get to Article thirteen, uh, I'll point that out in the ordinance and, uh, I guess, do you guys have any thoughts on, on that? Um, a couple of you obviously weren't on the team when we made that decision, um. That was what the intent was of the planning commission at that time.
I was out there.
You were, that's right. Yes.
Oh, it's a part of it.
Okay.
It makes sense.
Okay.
The board doesn't know all the intricacies.
And and Tony, and I guess just to give you a little bit of, quickly, a little bit of backstory thinking there, um, you know, it is pretty customary now at this point that your planning commission has the site review, and if you're doing the site review, the general thinking, and Seth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the general thinking is that you would also have, you know, the, uh, authority on the actual approval of the application, because, you know, your site review is ninety-five percent of whether or not that application is gonna get approved or not, because it's all related to the standards within the zoning ordinance itself.
Special land use first, and then site plan, all the same, you know, PC level.
Yep.
And then when you amend your ordinance, you do it all at once.
Yep.
And then, for, 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 Mike, um, I did email, uh, Katie, and I was asking her what she was doing with her clients, double marijuana ordinance, separate or the same. She said it didn't matter, whatever the, whatever the pleasure of the township is.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, that for service, guys. So, so that's kind of what, what was driving us there. Now, that was a big change from how we have traditionally done it, and it certainly puts a little bit more onus, I guess, on the planning commission, uh, but the general thinking was at the time that that's kind of where that responsibility should lie, I mean, that is why we're here.
Right.
So, um, I guess, do you, do you have any concerns about that?
I think so.
All right, and, uh, Gene, as our liaison, it sounded like you were in support of that.
I definitely am in support of that.
As far as that goes, okay, perfect. All right, did that take care of your?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Kevin, uh, you said you, you had noticed something as well?
Yeah, you mentioned page forty-two, but I think you meant forty-one for buffer zone.
That one, it's a language, I think, was.
Uh, no, so the, the language where we want to change it is actually on page forty-two.
Okay.
The buffer zones language starts on forty-one, but the, the paragraph that we need to, was it two five there? It looks like, or two, excuse me, two four.
Two four.
Uh, two four, uh, is actually on forty-two. Uh, okay, uh, let's see here, uh, jumping all the way to page fifty. Anybody have any other questions about marijuana-related stuff while we were in there? I think really just the, the clarification of the buffer zones is the only real, real thing that we have there. Uh, page fifty, uh, four two eight B, uh, that's the same situation that I had, uh, referenced earlier, where we have see article titled, there's not a number, and then, you know, Procedures and Processes for Special Land Use. So we'll just need to drill down that same way on that. Um, page fifty-two I have on here, um, so that's in the mineral extraction, uh, looks like F two. If you go down there, we're talking about the evergreen trees, uh, and, and, yep, and what we're gonna have, uh, as far as requirements, uh, you know, double row plantings, evergreens, not more than fifteen feet apart. Uh, two staggered roads, uh, shall be at least two feet in height at the time of planting. That I know is the typo, cause it should be the same as the solar, which is twelve feet.
Twelve feet, yeah.
Uh, but I guess, I mean, uh, we can discuss it quickly if someone wants to discuss a change on that, but, um, at the time when we, uh, reviewed the mineral extraction, battery storage, and, uh, the solar with, uh, our, our firm, uh, we kind of were the thinking that, um, you know, continuity between the two.
Yeah.
Uh, is probably a good thing, um, cause the two-foot tree is not gonna do anything. Yeah, so what, that's, uh, that's just a typo that, you know, that was always meant to be twelve feet, the same as the solar. Um, and then page fifty-six. Uh, let's see, where is that here? Actually, I don't have anything on page fifty-six.
Oh, it's unused, spelled wrong.
That, okay. I'm like, why do, why do I have this on here?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I, I circled it last time, too, yeah.
Thank you, Cody.
It doesn't have the ES, yeah.
And I think actually I, I got that from your, from, from your list that I was cross-referencing, I'm like, well, why, why it's not on my list? Anyway, wonderful.
I thought that was a new way to spell venue.
Sure. Okay. Um, that's all I had in my sections. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to add in those, um, four two five to four three two? And again, uh, we're gonna, we'll go over at the end of the meeting, kind of, you know, a timeframe to put everybody's list together and, and get everything back. Uh, fully intending to have a very organized three, three type of list when we come back in January of typos and changes that we'll have to drill down on, and then, uh, you know, actual text amendments, uh, broken down for everybody, but is there anything that needs to be added there? At this particular moment in time?
Well, we'll show it in a big.
Tony, did you have anything on your, your list I didn't bring with me? And again, uh, we can always, always add, add, add in January, um, I just didn't know if anybody had anything right in front of them.
It's the same as the other ones, special land use.
All right, well, there you go. See, I'm not crazy. Uh, page, page fifty-six up there at the top, thanks, Kevin, I appreciate it, always got my back, buddy. Uh, uh, so, so there's two things on page fifty-six, spelling a venue, and then if you go up to the top, it's the same thing where, where office is. Uh, see the article titled, it needs to have thirteen, and then processes and procedures, with a cross-reference to uh, the special, the Article Three, the table. Thanks, big guy. Anything else?
Um, when we go to page fifty-nine,
Thank.
At the top, it says insurance. Um.
What is that? Is that for, is that for gravel?
Outdoor event.
Or outdoor event? Okay.
Um, I, I was questioning, um, to the insurance and the amount specified to the township supervisor. Or is that gonna go to the zoning administrator?
Uh, page fifty-nine, the very top paragraph, T.
I have an out of date fifty-nine. I have a fifty-nine that doesn't have, but yours fifty-nine has.
Properties damage and personal injury in the amounts specified by the township supervisor.
All right, so Gene, it'll be, it'll be the last paragraph before four point three four, so.
Mine's on fifty.
Okay. That's mildly concerning that you've got a whole, a whole quarter page different from the rest of it.
I don't know, sure how that happened.
Okay, Tony, does your book?
Mine is right.
Okay.
Mine is right.
All right. Well, I'm not saying one's right or wrong, I'm just saying that.
Mine is right.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I found it.
Okay, all right, uh, so the question is, Claudia?
Is that, should that be the township supervisor, should that be the zoning administrator? If that's an insurance certificate?
Mm-hmm.
That somebody's gotta keep track of to make sure it's renewed every year.
So I actually, if it's all right, if we want to get a little bit off, off-topic, but related to topic, um, Seth, I did have a question, so regarding insurance, some of these special land uses, we require a liability certificate and to have the township, uh, to be named insured. Uh, you know, solar, marijuana, I believe gravel is that same way. Uh, my question to you is, and I guess, you know, it's two parts, one, what are you seeing, and then what might be your recommendation? Yeah, are we kind of to a point here where on our special land uses, we want to make that a general requirement of all special land use? Cause we see it in here in a few places, you know, probably, I'm, I'm gonna say four or five, and then you won't see it in other special land use.
I think it would depend on the land, so.
Okay.
I could see like, outdoor vent, I could see that being something that, you know.
That we would want, okay.
Yeah, like, like the removal, yeah, for sure, but then there's maybe others used in, like a gas station, if I'm reading.
Sure.
They need to have liability insurance, that would be a beneficiary of that.
Okay.
Right, uh, so just looking at T, an amount like acceptable to the township supervisor, or specified, um. I think it's also probably worth the call to your insurance carrier to say, hey, there's this outdoor, this is for outdoor events, right?
Yep.
And, and say, you know, we've got this in our ordinance, it, uh, it just says, in the amount specified by the supervisor, can you give us a, give an idea of what you think would be acceptable? I think, I, I, that's where I would start there.
Okay. I would assume that we would want to stick with consistency again, and if we require the two million general liability and several other places, that it would be the same, where we do require it, that would be the requirement, I guess.
Yeah, you could attach that, like, even if your zoning law doesn't specify it for specific use, but you think it's needed, you could attach that as a condition.
Okay, that would be considered a reasonable condition. Okay, that would be considered a reasonable condition?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, uh, well, let's do this, uh, Claudia, to answer your question, uh, because I, I don't like how that's vague. Uh, you know, first of all, you should have a set number in there, not just, you know, whoever is in charge at the time decides that this is what we wanna do, um, so, uh. And because we're, you know, gonna have the authority, it doesn't make sense to have a township supervisor listed, listed in that scenario anyway. If we listed anything that didn't have a set number and requirement, I would assume it would be the zoning administrator. Uh, or the PC itself, not, not the township supervisor, but I think the best way to go there would be to get an answer. Uh, as the attorney recommended, just on general, you know, what, what do you wanna see, what don't you wanna see, because we have this in our ordinance? And then change that to the same as what we have in the other three, where that's, you know, general liability, that's this much. And it's already a set predetermined deal that you have to, have to have. But it is nice to know that if we do decide that we wanna attach that as a condition, that we can do that, and that's not, you know, unreasonable. But I think if we're gonna have it in there in these uses where we are gonna require it, it should just be the same language.
I think so.
All right, that, uh.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, and that was in Shirley's, uh, section, uh, section, he, he took four-three-three to four-four-zero. Uh, I've got here page sixty, section four-three-seven, outdoors listed in the table as special use. Indoor, uh, standards is listed on the table, but not listed in four-three-seven. So this is kind of that trifecta of things that I was talking about, where we have our table of uses that has, uh, outdoor gun range as a special land use, it has indoor on there, but if you come over to the section, it's, it's nowhere to be found. So, um, that's also a permitted use on the table. I'm not so sure that that was the commission's intent at that time. I think we were talking about, uh, page sixty, Seth. Um, I don't think that we were thinking that, you know, both, both types of range would be a special land use. Um, you know.
As I recall, we're focused on the outdoor.
We were, yes. Um, so I think there's a couple of changes there that we need to make. One on the, on the table in Article Three, they need to be listed as special land use, uh, and then we need to probably, I, Cody, I believe you've, you've mentioned this, we need to get some standards for indoor.
Yes.
Uh, because the standards we have for the outdoor are specific to an outdoor range. Um, we'll need some, you know, and I would, I would think the list would be pretty small for indoor, probably just, uh, you know, noise. Okay.
There's a lot of science behind just the lead shooting.
Is there? So I think what we should do is maybe come back, uh, to this in January with a couple of draft options of language that we can just look at, and then we'll, we'll talk about what we wanna insert. Does anybody that? Anybody have, I guess, a, a problem or a concern with, with that? And I'm sure that we'll be able to find some language, I'm sure there's more than enough options out there for, for that kind of thing. Um. Uh, and then the next thing that, uh, we've got here in those sections is on page sixty-two. B-one-F. Oh, sixty-two, B-one-F, uh. Public park, public park shall be considered outdoor recreation, but shall not be required to obtain special land use and shall be exempt from the requirements of this section. So we've got that flag there. And then if you go right, right above it, so the neighborhood residential district, within the neighborhood residential district, outdoor recreation shall only be approved for a special land use permit on lots greater than five acres. If you go up to what we're considering possibly, you know, allowing there. So these outdoor recreation facilities, such as, but are not limited to ski facilities. Uh, I assume that's supposed to be golf courses, or courses for off-road vehicles, snowmobiles, baseball facilities, rugby fields, swimming pools. Doesn't, does not include trails, shall com- shall, shall comply with the following regulations. So those are just the kind of types that we have listed there, not mentioning all the similar uses. I guess my question is two-part. Uh, one, do we wanna consider taking the, that as out of the neighborhood residential district? As even an option for a special land use permit? So your neighborhood residential district, most of those parcels are way less than five acres. There are some that are five acres. But I just wouldn't think that we would want to allow that kind of activity in that, in that district itself. Um, so that's the first question. And then the statement on the public parks being exempt. I don't recall how we got to that. I don't know if public parks are just exempt from that kind of thing anyway, because they're generally run by your local municipality? Or do we have thoughts about not making them exempt, I guess? And then Claudia, I, I thought I heard you say that you had something in there, or was that it?
Oh, no, there was one more, which is, um, number eleven at the very top of the page, is to remove the word very.
No, very serious.
There should be no very serious impairment. There should just be no serious. And that's, there's another place we've got that in there too, I wrote.
Okay. All right.
So very small.
Okay. So real quickly, do we have a thought about changing that? A lot, you know, taking that special use out of the ne- neighborhood residential district? Do we want to increase the lot size of it to make it a little bit bigger? Um, you know, if you're looking at your, your maps that we have, you know, just taking our future land use map, you know, your ne- your neighborhood residential is everything in yellow. So there definitely are some parcels there that are bigger than five acres, but a lot of it is concentrated in the smaller quarter acre, one acre lot range.
Um, look at, at commercial, or what?
Well, so I would have, we could certainly go over to the article, so if you go over to Article Three, that will have what we consider recreation outdoor.
Wait, you have the page number?
Making the lot bigger, it's like just someone wants to put in a baseball field.
Okay.
Or something like that. I would, you don't need more than five acres for a baseball field.
Okay.
If baseball or make it compact, okay.
Sure, sure.
Um.
Okay, so that is, if I'm hearing you correctly, it would be a con to increasing the, increasing the size, because we would be effectively limiting the, the, the uses.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, five acres alone, you're like multiple.
As far as outdoor recreation, okay, all right.
Then also in the parking section, all parking shall be set back minimum forty feet from any residential district.
Okay.
While we are allowing it in residential district currently.
Mm-hmm.
So that's unattainable.
Okay.
Make them park way down the street or something.
Right.
Um. And then as far as the exemption part goes, I know they can talk with the township of, uh, like football courts across the street, that would, if we did not make that exempt, then that would have to immediately get canceled, because they, it's residential district, B, it's not five acres.
Okay.
There's something to think about.
That was gonna be my question.
Okay.
Somebody wanted to put a football court in a basketball court.
So, and so then, so, and it, I mean, my way of thinking here, you've got, there's, there are three conflicts within this. This one, one section here in four-three-nine, um. I think that you know, maybe we're overthinking it, so, so my concern is that if we allow it in the neighborhood residential district, you know, you had some pretty what I would, I mean, you know, your course for your off-road vehicles, I mean, I just don't think it's very likely it's gonna go down there. Uh, but I mean, so some of those uses though, I would think would be very intrusive to the, to the neighborhoods. At the same time, I, I agree with Cody that if you, if we increase that size from five acres, that, I mean, that's probably not obtainable for a lot of those things, you know, that don't need a full five acres. And then the parking requirement that is, you know, in the neighborhood residential district, you just don't have a lot of room, period. So. Um, thoughts from the team on how we might want to?
What size? From five acres to what?
So I don't necessarily think that we should look at changing it from five acres to, I think we should look at it first as, do we want it to be a special land use in that district or not? So if we take, if we, if you take it and make it a, not, not allowable under special land use in that district, but keep the public parks exempt, that would give your municipality the ability to still put in a public park in the neighborhood residential district, because they're exempt from those, from those standards. If you leave it in, any of those uses or similar uses, technically, if you have a lot of five acres or more, even if you're in the neighborhood residential district, you know, and you meet the standards, you know, you shall, you shall approve, so maybe, you know, it's just something that was, that was flagged here. I don't necessarily know if we need to, to make a change. Cody, do you have any particular thought on that?
So if we do continue to allow it in neighborhood residential, I think a quick fix for the parking was change district to structure.
Okay.
If we're allowing it in neighborhood residential, you can't not park in the neighborhood residential district.
Okay.
If you make it to where they can't be forty foot from a house.
Another residential structure, okay, residential, residential occupied structure, okay. All right, so that takes care of that, if we, if we leave it in as special land use, okay. And, and we, and we, if, if, uh, if we want some more time to digest this, guys, we absolutely can just put this on the list for January to come back, to come back to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, uh, there's no decision that needs to be made tonight, as far as that goes. Would the, would the team like some more time to kind of digest the pros and cons of that? I just have a concern of what we're defining as, you know, outdoor recreation and what we'll allow. Uh, you know, and if you have it in there and you have it in that district and they meet the standards, we shall approve.
Yeah.
So, I mean, uh.
You almost have to look at the possibility of the worst-case scenario.
Right. You know, and.
Five acres.
Sure.
And what could, what, what they would do with it that would fit this.
Criteria, you know, I mean, you know, like the ski thing, I mean, that's not gonna happen on the FBI, you know, down there, I mean, so, I mean, so maybe we don't necessarily need to. You know, but outdoor recreation is a broad term, like we, we have, what, a half a dozen of them lifted there? But if someone were to come to the zoning administrator, you know, with a similar use, you know, the first step the zoning administrator is gonna do is they're gonna, you know, see where that fits in the zoning ordinance as a similar use, and then apply those standards. So, while those are the ones that are listed, I'm sure there's a dozen that I'm not thinking of at least.
Right.
So, that would probably be both good in that district and probably also not good in that district as well, so. Why, why don't we do this? Why don't we put that on the list to drill back down on in January? And will, uh, I encourage everybody to consult their future land use map that you have in your zoning ordinance, and that'll kind of give you an idea of the size parcels that are in, you know, all shaded in yellow. Um, and give you a kind of something to go off of on, you know, okay, this is five acres, that's what that parcel looks like. How many of those are a possibility? As a, just a, a tool to help you guide you in your, in your thoughts. Any questions on that? Okay.
Oh, Mike, I got something real quick.
Yes, sir.
Just going back to the, um, the gun ranges on page sixty.
Yup.
Okay, sub-three-on-eleven to the very top, it says there, there shall be no very serious impairment to the quiet enjoyment. I don't know what very serious impairment means.
Okay.
Um, I read that on a case law research to see if like, you know, if the terms are that we should be aware of. And it's not a specific legal buzzword, just, so courts aren't gonna look at like speculative concerns. They're gonna look at actual harm.
Okay.
Okay, so I think maybe, I think if a court sees that, they're not gonna know what that means either. Okay, so I think, um, maybe a way to do this would be, there shall be no no, shall not disturb the quiet enjoyment of properties.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we try that. I just don't know where very serious impairment came, and I don't know how, um, a court would look at that. You can't really define that, case law doesn't define it, and I think it's a little vague, that's kind of where we get ourselves.
I, I would agree. Okay, and that's in regards to the very serious, uh.
What are we gonna call, what are we gonna say?
Shall not. The quiet enjoyment. And even that, like, it, there are statutes with outdoor gun ranges that they have, they have some additional protections, but I think it's worth having that in there.
Okay.
So we can deal with it if we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um. Uh, Barb.
Yes.
Do you have anything in your?
I have searched through the three times, I don't find anything that's misspelled or anything like that, um.
Okay.
Let's see, I'm in section forty-one, forty-three, I, I turned my page. Restaurant and bar is the first one, it's on page sixty-three. And. Um, I, I'll go pretty fast on these, because there's nothing that I can find that's wrong or that needs to be amended or anything.
Okay.
Uh, restaurant, bar, retail store is forty-two. A sexually orientated business, you know, I never saw this before, and, and I didn't know we had that. Adult motion picture, and all of these, adult bookstore, strip club. There's quite a bit of standards here on page sixty-four, um, such as, you know, nothing thousand feet of the schools or daycares, libraries, municipal buildings, so forth.
Just for the record, so everybody understands that, that's only allowable in the industrial districts. Um, or, Ta- Tony, one of our former commissioners, if you guys are rememberable, was very adamant that we don't want that in our town, so that's where we decided to put it.
Uh-huh, industrial districts, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
In, just in keeping everything consistent, uh, instead of houses of worship, most of the places in the ordinance list religious institutions, but I don't know if we wanna change how the worship of the religious institution.
Oh.
And then, as in marijuana, we've made it, you know, state-recognized schools, I don't know, we wanna make it the same for the K through twelve schools.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a good point, state-recognized. And houses of worship to.
Religious institutions.
Yeah, religion.
That's just what we already have, we have that listed other place.
Right. Okay. And, okay, so moving on to page sixty-five, we're into the solar energy systems, which we all know very well.
We do.
Oh, yes, we do. Um, prevalent land uses of the char- charter township are agricultural, anyway, told you all that part. The definitions are listed for various things related to the solar energy system. And, um, do I know if those are right or not? No, but, I mean, the definitions look reasonable.
Sure.
I mean, aggravates, is that how you say it?
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty safe to say that solar, we're.
Yeah, we, we've kind, we've kind of gone through all of that pretty well. And, um, on page sixty-seven, I just wanted to clarify this for myself.
Okay.
Number twenty-three at the top, where it says solar energy system testing facility, in that paragraph, it says not to be deemed In that paragraph, it says not to be deemed to be a communication tower. Does that mean a cell tower?
Yeah, I mean, any, any form of a communication tower. Yeah.
Okay. Should we, well, communication, I guess it doesn't matter if we say solid communication as long as we know what it is.
I think it's, I mean, it's, it'd be all encompassing of all types of communication, you know, whether it's nine-one-one or, you know.
Okay.
I, I'm assuming the emergency system has different towers than the cell tower. They all.
Yeah, they do. Okay, gotcha. So, all right, so moving on through all the other pages. This is still part of, uh, of the solar thing. I think there was a question I had. Yes, on page seventy-five. Number twenty-five abandonment in that part where it says any solar farm or individual solar panel that is a component of a solar farm that is not used to produce energy for a period of six successive months or longer shall be deemed to be abandoned and shall be properly dismantled and removed from the property in accordance with the decommissioning regu- regulations of this ordinance so forth. Who, who checks that if it isn't, uh, producing energy in six month time? Who, who's going to be responsible for that six months?
So I believe we talked about this when we had that, when we had the applicant and the application in front of us. And I can't remember if we a- addressed that in the conditions of approval.
I don't, I don't either.
Believe so.
Okay, um, I, I recall us saying that, you know, six months is not. Um, you know, maybe that was one of the meetings that we had with them.
With the, yeah, with the customer.
With them prior to the meeting, uh, because the way they were, you know, explaining it to us is that, you know, some of these components, if they, you know, go down or stop working or, you know, whatever the case may be, some of them are like twelve to eighteen months out on getting them, getting them replaced. So maybe it was the applicant that expressed concerns on that. Um, and we basically, I, it's, it's kind of coming back to me now, Seth. You had basically said that, you know, so because they have to come to us to get it, you know, an extension, we would not be able to deny that extension because it's six months. Um, so we're here, we're doing text amendments. Uh, Seth, do we want to take that out or put a different number on it? Or we can just leave it the way it is. Uh, we would probably change the township board to the planning commission.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, you know, but the, the long and short of it was the, the, how that is written is not enough time period to give an applicant a chance to, in that, in that scenario specifically, because, you know, that they don't just have, you know, you know, pieces of the, you know, I forget what piece of equipment they, they referenced. It was some long technical name, but basically it was like, we ordered these two years out. So if it goes down, you know, you can't, you can't tell us to get out and fold up our whole project, uh, because it's six months.
Apologies, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm okay with just changing the township board to the planning commission.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, uh, we did make the applicant aware at that time that, you know, so I mean, if that's something like that happens, you need to communicate that and just, you know, give it, give it, give us the required notice that we, you know, require in the zoning ordinance with the understanding that if the planning commission decided to, you know, violate them under special use permit, that's an unreasonable, you know, situation. And we should not do that. So.
Okay. Well, moving on to theater.
Okay.
Section four of forty-five, one page seventy-six. We don't have any theaters. So I don't know if we'll ever have a theater anymore since the drive-in is gone many years ago. So we have that utility structures and some stations, um. And the next page vehicle dealership.
Can you put it real quick, Mike?
Yes, please. No, you're okay.
On, um, with solar, it said six months, I think, was that what it was?
That's what it says in the zoning ordinance.
So when I look at your special use standards on page one sixty-seven, paren seven, it says if construction has not commenced, or the project has commenced, but has not made reasonable progress within twelve months after final approval, then the approval becomes null and void. And then it goes down to say you can, uh, you can request and write in an extension from the planning commission. But I can see one issue here. Let me see. Planning commission may grant one or more extensions of up to a total of twelve months. So you got a little bit of inconsistency there in your solar that says six origin, that says six months. And then, um, one sixty, page one sixty-seven, parentheses, about twelve months. So.
So maybe we should change that to twelve months?
Well, so to me, they're talking about two different, so it's what you're referencing is talking about like the construction of the, of the special land use. This is, uh, of the initial. The, the abandonment is talking, I'm, I'm assuming it's done and for whatever reason, they're not producing power and they're not using it. But I, but I, I tend to agree with the, the, so it's the same thing though, like there's, there's a, there's a process where they need to notify and then get an extension from us. So I guess I'll pose that question one more time. Do we want to change that number from six to twelve to make it consistent with what Seth is talking about there? So it's, it's the same, same process or?
I think we spoke about that at the meeting too, like, do they want just a letter from, I don't know if it's decided, did your zoning administrator or the planning commission just saying, you know, due to circumstances, you guys aren't, I don't have to adhere to that six month. I'm my face.
Right.
Of course, it depends if they have true abandonment or not.
Right. So I mean, it gets, it gets tricky. I mean, so we're using the reference, the, you know, the example, I guess of if they have an equipment default.
Mm-hmm.
As, as, you know, whatever. Um, you know, if it's not equipment default and it's not being used, I mean, I would consider that probably abandonment, you know, when I mean, they're just, I mean, they're not going to walk away from two hundred fifty million dollars. So I mean, I know, may- maybe we're splitting hairs here. Seth, do you want to make it consistent and change that to twelve?
Um.
You want to think about it?
I, yeah, I don't know. I guess if I let me think about it, I think it should change, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Barb.
No problem. Okay, so, um, servicing of vehicles. I don't know if we really, well, we have Rhombah in the village, right? Is that car dealer, does the car play still there? Okay. So, and they, they never have to start at parts, I suppose. Um, out, because they have to be in a enclosed building. I don't know if we have any other.
I mean, which they do have there. They've gotten enclosed building. They work on them.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Okay. And the next page, um, I guess I wanted some clarity on the. Outdoor storage.
Mm-hmm.
Inoperable wreck, partially dismantled. Um.
I don't know that one too.
Yeah.
So typically I would recommend, I mean, seeing your zoning ordinance, leave it there, but if you're going to enforce junk vehicles, I would do it with the non-zoning police power ordinance. Okay, that, that's typically where they are. It's a non-zoning ordinance, uh, light, junk vehicles, dangerous, like things like that that we should citation for. I don't see anything wrong with this, but I think, um, when we have dedicated ordinances for, for junk vehicles, we can get much more specific. Um, that's what's in here.
Okay.
Vehicle probably won't regulate. Okay, I think you, you probably have a.
We have an inoperable vehicles ordinance.
I, I, yeah, I think we've used it before in court. I don't. Yes, I don't know how new it is or it might be really old, but I think it worked.
Okay. Um, let me just break that down for the commission and explain, and try and answer your question, Barb. So we have, we put that in there, assume, you know, so we don't want, you know, I mean, you can break down at a gas station for a variety of reasons. We put that in there. Um, I think on the advice of the planner so that, you know, that we had a way to enforce that so that, you know, you don't have a broken down vehicle at the gas station for, you know, weeks or days at a time. Um, but what Seth is saying is that that's kind of difficult to enforce. Cause that's a, it's, it's in our special land use as a standard for the applicant. He's saying that, you know, you can get better, you, you, you achieve your objective by having, uh, you know, police powers ordinance that allows them to, to see, you know, so we're not going to cite the applicant for a car that broke down on their place.
Right.
You know, we need to have an ordinance or an avenue for them to call the township and say, hey, these people haven't removed this and it's, you know, and that's, and that's what they're referring to. Cody, do we have a decent one of those?
Yeah, uh, I like it a lot and Cohen Pines likes it a lot because it's very broad in what they consider an inoperable vehicle.
Okay.
To where a lot of people honestly get mad because they'll get letters from us and saying like, hey, you have an inoperable vehicle. And they'll prove very easily that, no, it's not an operable, but because it states anything, uh, that, you know, doesn't have a tag on it. Um, if it has snow on it for more than, I think, forty-eight hours or, you know, leaves built up on it, we can, are able to consider it an operable flat tire. Really all they have to do at that point is start it for us. They can prove it's, you know, operable or, you know, put a new license plate on it, tags. Um, it's very easy to comply with. And it, but it helps keep the, you know, junky cars for the most part.
Under control.
Yeah.
Well, that seems very, that seems very strict. That's my first thought there, but, uh, uh, that's not our rodeo, guys.
It's directed in the sense that it allows us to write a, write a lot of letters.
Okay, hoping to seek action.
And, and then it's very easy to then also prove, hey.
That's not a problem. Okay. All right. Uh, so that kind of clarified what you, what your question was. Um, and Seth, we're good to leave that in there that way. Okay.
So I have another one.
Yes.
So on page seventy-seven.
Yep.
If we go down to, it's under vehicle dealership and we go down to number two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, subject to review and approval by the township. And I think that should say the PC or the zoning administrator. That's under the grading and the surface and drainage. So, subject to review and approval by the township. Oh.
Pretty ambiguous, huh?
Yeah, who wouldn't the township? Right. I mean, that's just. And then.
Okay.
Did you say the zoning administrator? Um, one of them, PC or zoning administrator. I'm not. Um, I'm going to change that.
Okay.
And then I have, we go to the next page, page seventy-eight. I'm trying to write what I do with these, um. For page seventy-eight, if we go down to vehicle repair.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, V for standards in that first paragraph of township fire marshal.
Yep.
Yep, it sure did.
Yep.
Missed that again. Okay.
Okay.
So are we just removing that or are we putting, what do we, how are we, what's the language for the sentence going to say at the end? Yeah. And approved by the township fire marshal, approved by PC, zoning commission or what? How is that going to read? Prior chief.
Uh, why don't we see how we're getting, so we see this and, and I mean, this is at least the fourth or fifth.
Yes.
Just tonight that we've seen it. Why don't we, why don't we get with chief and see what his thoughts are on that, that language and just see, you know, the, you know, do you want something like that as, as a standard for us to review? I mean, you know, or you, I guess. So how that would work, because that's the standard in there, you know, we would require chief to go out, take a look at whatever it is that, you know, it is. And then, you know, we'd get a report saying, yeah, they, they meet that criteria or whatever. So.
I think it should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially with safe thing, fire trucks generally go to backup. So, you know, they got to be able to
Right.
access the property and they're wide, usually one twenty-six feet wide, uh, that way they get an apparatus, everything all over it. And, and, uh, understand what type of surface it is. So it doesn't get stuck either.
Okay.
So fire marshal, they usually do like six safety infections, but I don't see why a fire chief, I mean, you have to talk to your fire chief, but it's, it's a lot of time you see a condition, uh, uh, approval of the fire chief.
Okay. You know, and I mean, that probably honestly could be even folded into our general standards where we, you know, public service, you know, access to public services. I forget what number that is now, but I think it's like, but number two or number three in the, in the general standards for special use, you know, I mean, that could be considered part of that. Um, but we do have it listed several places. So we'll talk to chief and just, I guess, let him know that we're putting it in there and see what his thoughts are. And, and go from there, but, uh, I, I, I agree, we need to change it to the correct terminology. And then just reach out to them to make sure that that's, that's kosher and I, I don't think it'll be a problem. Okay?
Okay.
Barb, anything else?
Not in that section four, um, I do have.
In your articles?
Yeah, my articles, my eleven and twelve.
We'll get to those in just, just, just a sec. Okay. Does anybody have any other, any things that they noticed in those sections? And again, guys, we're going to talk about a timeframe to put these lists together and make sure that we catch everything. And that's not to say that we're going to catch everything either, guy. Uh.
There's a lot here.
There is a lot here. Yes, that's right.
Take a moment to say thank you for being here, our audience.
Okay, uh, next is going to be a review of articles one, three, ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen. Uh, I think the first five will be very, very quick and then thirteen will be probably a little bit, a little bit longer. In length. I probably should find my piece of paper. Barb, why don't you start with, uh, your two sections? We're just going to go out of order until I can. Hold on, I got it. Nevermind. We're okay. We're okay. Okay, uh, article one, um, just some general housekeeping there. I don't know. So Gene, this will be actually an interesting little question for you. So in article one, section one oh two, does your copy have a date in there? Okay, it doesn't. Okay. All right. Well, another mystery. I thought maybe it was different because you had that information filled out, but I guess not. Okay. All right. So section, uh, one oh two, one oh seven and one oh eight all need to be inserted the correct dates. And, you know, who the supervisor at that time was.
Yep.
Um, I believe that's going to be Kendall. Mm-hmm.
Which article?
Oh, was it Terry?
Yep, Steve Galloway in last November.
Okay. So maybe it was Terry. Yeah, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. Uh, but, uh, bottom, bottom line, we need to get those things all inserted, uh, appropriately with the dates, the dates that those things took place. So that when we update our books, they're updated and then when we put the updated version online, they're also updated. Um.
Similar to that.
Yeah.
I have had people find out that our version online does not have the adopted effective amended dates for it out.
Okay.
From the very front cover.
From the front cover?
Yep.
Okay.
I think you're supposed to ask, well, at least in the past, they've had the, uh, the names of the planning commission.
So they have that in the master plan. They don't do it on.
Oh, that's right. The plan.
Yep.
Yeah. So page three, under adoption. Are we still using, I mean, it says township board, township board and township board.
So the township board adopts the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So we're, we're only talking about the authority on the special land use. But the township board will always have the, they're the ones that, that vote to adopt the, the zoning ordinance itself.
Okay.
Correct, Seth? Okay. Yep. So yes, we will, that, that will continue to stay the same as far as that goes.
Okay.
Well, like with the fire marshal things, we have, we need to be consistent on whether we say the charter township of Bedford or Bedford Charter Township.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
Like, yeah, the header's all the way through, say Bedford Charter Township.
I did ask, um, last Wednesday, I asked our court to look that up. What is the article of incorporation? In there and it says Bedford Charter Township.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that's what it should.
Even though, even though if you look online, you can sign, find the same information. You go charter township of Bedford, Bedford Charter Township.
And, you know, funny enough, usually it's charter township of, of whatever the township is, but it definitely seems like incorporation is going with that.
The, uh, Penfield is Penfield Charter Township, their official thing. So they could go both ways. Yes.
Does that matter, Seth? So, okay. So we just, so for consistency, and I will say that, you know, those types of things will be easy to do when we, when we format it, especially if we end up having, you know, McKenna help us with the formatting. Cause you can just do a keyword search and it will flag every single one within the zoning ordinance, the theoretically. Use that term very loosely. Um, okay. Um, okay. Uh, that's all, uh, we have in section one. Um, let's go ahead and skip to section ten. Barb, that is you, correct?
No, I have eleven and eleven. Well, I'm ten. We're, they've been telling the signs. Ten, oh, wait a minute, yeah, wait a minute, articles.
One, page one thirty.
Oh, yeah, I guess they do. Article ten.
We can go over it real quick.
Ten and twelve.
No big deal.
Okay, so the signs, of course, we, we kind of. Don't need any. Anything that I found unless somebody else did. Um, exempted from hit with signs, um.
I mean, I think we covered that pretty well when we.
I think so too. What I was thinking, we, we did, we covered that pretty well. I'll tell you one thing, speaking of signs, we need a better sign at the corner up here.
I put that a while back.
Turn into where this township office is.
You don't see it and you got that tree that's right there.
Right.
It isn't helping.
We need a, a lit sign or something. We need something.
Very small.
It's, it's terrible.
Difficult when you don't own the property at the street level though.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, with the signage, I don't, I don't see anything that jumps out at me. I didn't.
Okay.
Um, article, I'm kind of skipping article eleven.
No, no, I'll do it.
You'll do eleven, okay.
So.
Go to twelve.
Yeah, uh, so article eleven. Uh. Basically is all about the format standards. Um. I did have two questions on that, so gonna be, uh. Eleven oh three A, so that's page one forty-seven. Uh, so I'm just gonna read the paragraph and then post the question. Upon receipt, uh, of evidence of possible violation, the zoning administrator shall make a determination whether it is a reasonable cause to suspect the operation is indeed violation of the performance standards. The zoning administrator may initiate an official investigation in order to make such a determination. Um, so I just have, I guess, a question on that. Cody, do we have a official complaint form? Readily available that, you know, has, you know, updated what I would call current relevant information. So that when someone complains about, you know, the, you know, the performance of any standards within the zoning ordinance. They, you know, can give you the information that you need to, you know, initiate an investigation, I guess.
Yep, so it doesn't specifically, you know, say, um, performance standard complaint.
Okay.
I know I have some printed off in my office. I think there might even be some on the window out here in front. Um. But it asks for the, uh. Yeah, so it's titled resident complaint form, ask for resident name, address, phone number. I don't always make them fill that out.
Okay.
Cause that way if it does get entered in the record, I don't want someone to know that their neighbor, you know, then you have neighbor fights.
Mm-hmm.
So usually in those situations, me or co-compliance will go and verify their complaint anyway. That way I'm basically the one on the complaint.
Okay.
Property of concern, address. And then the complaint, the date, time, who it was received by. Uh, then there's a section for department investigation, date and time, department and response, date and time.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is it's, it's not like specifically listed in there. You know, I mean, so, you know, upon receipt of, of evidence, like what are we, what are, what are we referring to, I guess? Like, that seems vague. So the, the only, the only thing I'm, I guess, concerned about is that. So we just, you know, again, came out of a, a public hearing where, you know, we, you know, we, we said, oh, we had all these complaints and this, that, and the other. But we didn't actually have, you know, like a complaint, you know, a complaint, you know what I mean? So my concern is that, you know, when, when we have possible, you know, performance standard violations. I think it's very important that we have a, a very, very detailed complaint form that gives the zoning administrator and the township the necessary coverage that they're not, you know, we're not on a witch hunt, you know, you know what I mean? If that makes sense. Uh, so, so, so that, that struck me as being very vague there. Seth, would, you kind of look like, you kind of agree, don't agree?
Well, no, for first, upon receipt of evidence, I think it would be upon receipt of a complaint.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so something this section does is it does a few things. When, when I see the word termination, when I see the word interpret, things like that, those are zoning decisions. Okay, so if you don't, if someone doesn't agree with that, they can appeal to the ZBA. So you're, you're adding the process, maybe you don't necessarily want.
Okay, so that, so I was literally, literally gonna ask, that was gonna be my next question. Is that if you, even if you jump, and I don't mean to cut you off, but if you jump over to like our method and cost determination. Again, that's referencing the zoning administrator, like, you know, is that person qualified to make that? Make that decision, you know, do you need to loop it, you know, so? The, it all seemed very, very vague to me, so I just wanted us to touch base on that. And that was actually on my list of things that I kind of thought that we should maybe, as a commission, agree to let the township attorneys look at. And just tighten the language up on that a little bit. More so than anything to give the, both the township and whoever's in the zoning administrator office. A little bit more clarity and or comfort. And, you know, not, you know, not stepping in it.
Right, so let me give you an example here, kind of what, just so. You understand what could happen here. So you got this section eleven oh three, procedures for determining compliance, okay? When I see the word shall, that means you have to do it. Okay, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that, that zoning administrator shall do, okay, before. It, it almost appears before you can issue a citation, right? So let's think of, of a situation where maybe there's a use in the township that releases a really bad order that, that, that irritates people, right? Instead of just issuing a citation, I have to go through this process, eleven oh three. And then give people the ability to, to appeal to ZBA and then all of a sudden you're, you know, a couple of months out, the problem's still.
Still there.
Fixed, and then even after the ZBA decision, they can still go to the circuit floor. So, I mean, that's a, that's a lie.
Okay.
You know, and, uh, a lot of times, I think it's a great idea having, uh, yeah, the complaint form, you need to, right? But, uh, when I see a lot of shouts, when I see interpretations, I, I'm just not sure that's what. What we want.
Okay. So when I'm reading it, I'm, I'm, there were several places where I got tripped up and I'm thinking to myself, this is, this is both very vague. And then also, like you just said, very specific about like what we're gonna do. And how, and, and how we're gonna get there, and it just seemed like it was always the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator. Which is not necessarily a problem, but certain things, you, that person may not, you know. I mean, Cody, you're very good. But like, you know, you might, you, there might need to be a, a third, a third party to validate, you know, because, I mean, you know. You, you know, I, so it seemed, it seemed vague in some ways, but yet too specific in other ways.
Like another thing to be aware of too, is like if there's ever, say, there, there's a, if Cody, and is, is, is zoning administrator at some point. A new zoning administrator is not gonna know about this, okay, this section.
Right.
And then all of a sudden they're getting complaints, they're gonna issue the citation.
And we'd be technically violation of our own.
Procedure of the process, you know.
Okay.
Situation, so, and to take a citation would, would absolutely get thrown out, so we didn't even follow our, our own.
Right.
So like that's, you know, there's, there's some pros and cons here, uh. Determining compliance, that's typically something that the zoning administrator. Gets the complaint, looks at it, talks to the admin, figures it out, and if there's a problem and it's not resolved. The assessment faction of the zoning administrator, then you're gonna go with the citation. That's typically.
Okay.
Now, I mean, we could do more than that, but.
Sure, uh, so the other, I mean, so is this the same thing? Uh, would, would this, would this scenario apply to like conditions of approval that we've attached to a special land use as well? Like, the zoning administrator is gonna determine whether or not the condition that we attached is.
I mean, I think that's how it would work anyway.
Okay.
Right, I don't think you necessarily see a condition, because if there's a problem with, and they didn't do this condition, the zoning administrator is making that, making that.
Okay, all right, so that process is the same whether we're talking about regular performance standards within the zoning ordinance or special land use standards as well, okay? Um, I, I, I would like our attorneys to kind of take a look at this section and see if we can't iron out some of, some of this. I mean, it's, it's quite lengthy, uh, you know, uh, what, three, three or four pages worth of stuff? Um, I would like to see us maybe iron that out and make that a little bit easier. Uh, for the, both the zoning administrator and then also for the township, if there is a problem that, you know. Uh, you, you never want to tell a resident, oh, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it basically in six months after we've done fifteen steps. You know, I don't think that that's in the best spirit, spirit of what our intention is either. Does anybody have any other thoughts on that? Is that, is that okay if we go that route?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, uh, you know, this is not, Cody, I don't want you to feel like we're picking on you. Or we're, I'm, I'm really just trying to think of ways to not be in the hussy. As far as that goes. Okay, uh, article twelve, Barb, did you have anything that you had noticed in there?
No, I just, uh, thought it was interesting to read what PUD is. Planned unit development is what it stands for. And provides a regulatory option that is intended to provide a degree of flexibility. So as to achieve development that is in accord with the township's master. I thought that was very good. Economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, energy, and in the provision of public services and utilities. Useful open space particularly suited to proposed development. Conservation of natural features and development that satisfies the needs of township residents. So I. Think that's an important, uh, section to understand and know about.
I actually have a question, you probably more for Seth regarding this.
Yeah.
Uh, specifically the, the very first paragraph, the last line, a subdivision plot must be approved with planning.
Oh, yeah.
At what point? Does it become a subdivision plot, like if someone buys sixty acres. And a thirty or fifty acres, already zone, neighborhood residential, which only requires quarter acre lots. And they at first parcel off three, I don't consider that, some stuff, but. And then they build out those, and then four years down the line, they parcel off four more. Like, how many, if, you know, I think we needed to find that somewhere in here. Cause, you know, it might be years between it, but if they have the grand scheme of, or they don't have the grand scheme of a full subdivision. Then it's not necessarily planning a development, but if they buy fifty acres.
And do it over time, that's, it basically is.
And eventually they build a subdivision.
Cody, what page and paragraph is that that you?
Page one fifty.
Okay.
The very first paragraph, very last.
And just, uh.
Yeah, under intent.
Okay.
And the second paragraph, uh, is kind of interesting. Furthermore, planned unit development is intended to encourage innovation in land use. Particularly on sites with significant natural, historical, and architectural value. Or on sites that exhibit difficult development constraints. Planned unit development allows for a mix of land uses and clustering of residential structures. So as to reduce develop, development costs, preserve natural features, and maintain open spaces.
So I ask a question about this.
Yeah.
Is this Saddle Ridge?
Is it what?
Saddle Ridge.
Saddle Ridge, the area.
Uh, similar, we do have a, uh, like a sub-development plot for Saddle Ridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's that other one, Hunter's Ridge.
Yeah.
Same deal.
Yep, they were all kind of parcel off all at the same time. They went through these processes, the assessor had the actual plot map for those.
I can see more of that happening.
Yeah.
That's why I wondered.
Yeah, and I've gotten some questions from people about it when they see. There's that free time with a big hundred ten acre property on, uh, Hutchinson was for sale a couple of years ago. Does that field up here, you know, ninety-nine, kind of behind, uh, Gulf Point that randomly goes for sale off and on? Uh, the helpers are always interested, so.
Okay, so, um. Let's see, I still hope that.
All right, so Cody, we'll, uh, figure out where, we can help you out with the language on that. Under, under the intent on page one fifty, so that. We have a, some, some form of a line. Seth, do you have a line?
Well, I ha- I have one question here, so PUDs. Under the zoning enabling acts. The law governing the government mayor for the PUD, which would be the township, but I also believe the PC clerk. And I think when I looked at your ordinance, it said in recommending, making a recommendation to the township board. So I need to, first, is that what you want? Uh, because if that does, that is somewhat relatively common, but I think I need to look at that a little closer.
Okay.
Okay, um, because I don't know what it is right in your previous zoning ordinance, not that that really matters right now, but.
Right.
New ordinance, but.
I assume it was the township board.
Probably, yeah.
I would almost bet good money on that.
I think maybe we gotta look at two point oh four and, and see what.
Okay.
What we thinks. What we thinks appropriate, like also to like master plan. Who is final approval of master? The planning commission is the board.
The, the, the board does.
Okay, so, and I think that's, they have the authorities, actually.
Yeah, it's good, so they, yeah, so that.
So, I, I, you know, I think maybe that's something that we need to think about in PUD.
Okay.
Um, so I'll make a note about that too and.
Okay. And I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, so, you know, we, we talked about the board. Not having the authority on special land use. I don't think that there's a, a huge disconnect if we do that for special land use and then if we do the PUD. Jointly, is that kind of what you're, what you're saying, Seth, or are you saying that we, we should be unified in the sense that?
I don't necessarily think it needs to be unified.
Okay.
Because I've seen it not unified.
Sure.
So usually see like the SLU and type things done at the PC level and then PV goes up to the board.
Right.
So.
So on that, that, so that's a situation where we would take a look at the site plan and all the standards within the, the ordinance. And then we would send it to the board for their final approval for that, for a PUD. Now, I will say, there is a huge difference between the planning commission approving a PUD. And the planning commission doing a special land use. And if, you know, I mean, I mean, I don't know when's the last, Barb, did you ever, have we ever done a PUD here?
No, that's why I found that kind of interesting, reading about.
So, uh, you know, it, and it's more interesting because generally it can be, you know, as, as Barb just read, it's a mix of different. Different types of land use, different districting, you know, there's, there's.
And then twelve.
It's a large, it can be a large, large can of worms, to be, to be truthful.
And in section twelve oh four, uh, letter D, that's, there's the approval process there.
Mm-hmm.
Which I wasn't, you know, familiar with at all either. Cause there's a lot, a lot of recommendations from the planning commission.
Yeah.
You know.
And that's kind of what Seth, what Seth is, is talking about.
Yeah.
Uh.
The board is one of.
I, I, I would think in, in that situation, because, I mean, we're, we're just not talking about, I mean, yes, we're gonna review the same standards. But it's gonna be, you know, I mean, typically it can, I mean, you know, it potentially could be, it's not just a subdivision, you know, it could be. Uh, you know. A, a, a level of, you know, uh, mixed use and, you know, some apartments with other retail stuff. I mean, there's, there's, there's a whole can of worms, get opened up there.
Yeah.
I, now, I don't think that we can come together and make that decision, but I do think that, um, you know, on, on that level of that scale of things. If you were to process one of those, that's significantly different than just one special land use for, it's one specific application.
Right.
Um.
So are we sending all of article twelve over to the attorneys as well as, like we are with, um, eleven?
Uh, yeah, why, why don't we plan on that? I mean, so we're, we're gonna specifically get the answer to, you know. Whether we can have, have it one way or another, you know, one way on the special land use and then one way on the PUD as far as the authority, the approval. Recommendation, if you will.
Okay.
Uh, but there were a couple of other things there that Seth wanted to, to take a look at.
Yeah, that whole thing on pages. Yeah, that whole thing on pages one fifty-two and fifty-three, there's a lot.
Yep.
There's, yeah.
Under, under.
There's transmittal.
So specifically, specifically, we're going to send those two articles over for them to look at the process and procedure of what we're doing and how we have it set up. Uh, in, in the, in each instance.
Okay.
All right, any, okay, anything else there?
Lot of understanding what a PUD was.
Sure, absolutely.
And it's not sure where we could explain it, but kind of have an idea.
Okay, section thirteen, uh, this is our procedures and processes section. Um.
Yeah.
So we've had a, a chance now to go through and process a couple of special land uses under, under our new ordinance. And there are a few things that I think we're going to want to clarify and then just, you know, maybe make some just wording changes as far as that goes. Uh, that first one being whether or not we're making the recommendation on a special land use to the township board. I think we're all in agreement that as long as we can have them, you know, separate as far as the P U D and a special land use. Uh, the township planning commission will assume the authority on the special land use. Only at this time unless legal, uh, council comes back and says, well, you really should have them be the same. And then at that point, we'll need to have a conversation. Everybody understand that?
Yes.
That, Seth, is that, you're understanding there as well?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, perfect, um. So I just want to draw everybody's attention real quick to thirteen oh three, uh, D B one, right down there at. One fifty-eight, uh, so this is specifically related to conditions that we've attached. Uh, Gene just said that the board approved the recommendation, uh, from the planning commission. So I just want to go over the last step and for Cody and I were just talking about this. Uh, basically, because this is totally different than what we've always done, um, as far as that, the thoroughness. Applicant shall submit a revised plan with the revision date indicating compliance with the conditions. The applicant must re, resubmit the site plan to the planning commission for final approval after conditions have been met unless the planning commission waives its right. To review the revised plan and instead authorizes the zoning administrator to review and approve the site plan after all required conditions have been addressed. So I don't necessarily have a problem with how we have that written. Uh, but I do think that, you know, from here on out, we'll moving forward, want to be very specific as to whether or not we're waiving our right. And letting the zoning administrator do that, or if we want to do that ourselves. A specific example of that, which was kind of a little, a little unrelated to that, was the Casey's gas station. Because that was a condition of approval so they could get the waiver from the planning commission. So it's, it's a little bit different, but it's the same thing. I think there's a lot of times that we're as a commission going to want to see that those conditions have been met. Before we, you know, the permit can't be issued until those conditions are met. Before we let the, you know, give the, the, the A O K to the, the zoning administrator. Um, so I'm just, I guess, pointing that out and making sure that everybody understands that as so and is okay with how we have that written. Um, I don't necessarily think that we want to have it to where the zoning administrator can't make that decision. Uh, you know, because I'm, there's a lot of times where it's, there's, there's no conditions attached or something like that. Why bring it back to our attention and put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Um, do we have any thoughts about that? Okay, so I just wanted to point that out because that is different procedural wise than, than what we were doing. Like I said, Cody and I were just talking about it today, uh, before the meeting, like, we got one more step here. You know, bear with us basically as far as the applicants go. Uh, let's see, uh, next thing I've got on my list here. Uh, section thirteen oh three, so that's page one fifty-nine, number two. Uh, so an applicant shall have a maximum of two years from the date of submittal of a site plan. Uh, for full more review to achieve final approval of the site plan, including compliance with all the conditions. If approval is not achieved within this period, the application becomes null and void. And a new application is required to pursue, uh, to pursue a site plan review further. Uh, so my question, so in my opinion, that's two years is too long.
Yep.
Seth, would, I mean, what do you generally see in your?
Well.
So from a consistency standpoint, like if you read a, a little bit further on here about, you know, uh, our, you know, performance guarantee again. Or, or, you know, performance standards, you know, it's twelve months. And then you have to come back and see us to get an extension as to why you haven't completed that, you know, construction.
Right, I think I'm a little confused here of.
Why it's in there?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would confuse too.
As the site plan was approved by the planning commission, right?
So that's, so that's kind of how that reads, yeah.
Right.
So, so to me, I, so when I read the first two sentences, you basically have. Even though it doesn't specifically say, I view that as you have two years from the time you turn in your application. With a site plan, because when you turn in your application, in order for us to see it, you've got to have your site plan, you have two years to get an approval.
So.
That just, it does, it doesn't make sense that that's in there.
There could be some, I don't know if it's in this zoning ordinance, but a lot of times zoning ordinance has included provision. Uh, that says you got to process within a specified period of time after the complete application is submitted. So the way I would see this is. The zoning administrator, you don't generally put something on the agenda unless you have a complete application. Which includes a complete site plan, and I understand sometimes there's, you know.
Yes, yes, we are, we are much better about that now than we were in the beginning.
Yeah, but, but that's, I don't understand two, two years.
Okay.
Two years from the date of the middle of the site plan and formal review, that to me reads, I submit my site plan and then from there, there's two years to get.
Right, I, you know, I, you know, as, as the presiding official of the commission, I can take two years to put it on the agenda. I don't, I mean, you can't do that, so, you know, alright, so we need to figure that out. So I just wanted to draw that to the attention of the commission, uh, in the sense that I think that's not going to fly. Uh, as far as that goes, uh. What do we think about changing that to, you know, so if you go a little bit further in there. Uh, the process for a special land use is that, you know, once they have submitted their site plan, they're placed on the next available. Agenda date, you know, so a meeting that we already have set a date. Uh, do we want to maybe change that to, you know, from two years to like six months?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Okay, cause.
Like I don't want to lock us into just the next available.
Yeah.
Agenda date with no ability to, you know, who knows what we have going on or don't have going on. So, but I, I would think it would be reasonable, especially in the eyes of the board, if we said, well, we have six months to get. To, to get it on an available agenda date, or we'll have to have a special meeting at that.
We need to fix this too, because it says, two years from the date of the middle of the cycle, I can submit a cycle in tomorrow, it'd be a mess. Right, so, and, and Cody's like, no, that's, that's not even your complete, but if your ordinance says I have six months to do it, I didn't give you.
Okay.
Submitted, I never gave you the application, that's probably, probably, I mean, we could get there, but I just think we have to.
Okay, so we need to, we need to clean that up, uh, into two different ways it sounds like, okay, alright.
We've been exploring the exploration of site plan, twelve months.
Yeah, I was just reading that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Uh, same page, uh, for A. Uh, application for building permit, uh, following final approval of the site plan, engineering plans, the applicant may apply for a building pit. Permit from the Calhoun County Building Department. Now, Cody, this is more your, 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 your rodeo, but there is no such thing, correct? Okay. Alright, because it goes on, it's, it, it goes on to say, it shall be the responsibility of the applicant to obtain other applicable township, county, state. Or federal permits prior to the issuance of a building permit. So we don't, had, no one turns in the application to you and it goes to a different, like you are the, like, building official takes a look at the.
But, similar to that, I spoke to one of our inspectors the other day, he mentioned in Branch County, they're now requiring, like. He asked me if I physically see well and septic permits before issuing a brand new hospital. Yeah, because the county does that, they don't necessarily always share them with me. Um, but I mean, that is something we kind of require on a building permit. Um, but that would kind of fit that sentence, that would be other applicable.
Okay, alright.
Yes, yeah, so there's a C of O, then it's already valid.
Yeah. But he was worried, I guess, in Branch, they ran into some issues where houses were being built that, and then they, they didn't have sewer water. Hook up, down, we didn't have enough room. They were building too big of a house and now they had no room for well, I figure not enough room to do the fifth foot between that. Yeah.
Alright, so I can see, so I can see leaving it in there because as you just said, they have to go to the county to get a septic permit. Which is primarily what we are out here. So maybe the, 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 I guess clarification needs to be the wording building permit. That's in front of Calhoun County Building Department.
We also need to, yeah, change Calhoun County to township.
Okay, alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll get some clarification on how we need to do that. But that kind of jumped off at me there as far as that goes. Uh, also page one fifty-nine, approval and, uh, denying, um. Again, the process now, so. That's up there, um, I, I jumped ahead there, sorry guys, um, under three A. Uh, after final action has been taken, the site plan and all steps have been completed. Three copies of the application and the plans shall be marked with approved, denied. And then, you know, we've just recently gotten into the habit of having the, the clerk's office notarize them. And then one copy gets sent to the applicant as their, their final, this is approved and this, that and the other, um. I was talking with Cody about that and then also, uh, the clerk today on getting us some, some stamps, some, you know, stamps or whatever. So that, you know, we can, we can take care of that, but that's also a change. Um, and how we're conducting business, and I'm just bringing that up so that everybody is, you know, aware, Cody himself as well. That, you know, before we issue the permits, that's, all those steps need to be taken now as far as that goes. Which is a little bit of a difference, um. Page one sixty, uh, E one. So this is something that we have run into a ton of trouble with. Um, both myself from the chair position and then also Cody as our zoning administrator. Like our application is very vague and most of the time not filled out appropriately by the applicants, not to any of their fault. But, so our new zoning ordinance, you know, specifically says application form, application shall contain the following information, and it lists, you know, nine things on there. I can't tell you that I've ever seen an application form have more than three of those things on there. Cody, would you not agree? Okay, um, so I guess what I would like to do, um, is I would like to. I'd like the planning commission to work with our zoning administrator on updating that form. Um, so that it in some way has this information that we require. So that they know that when they turn that application in, that's the, those are the minimum basics that we require. And then, you know, that saves Cody from having to, or the, excuse me, the zoning administrator, whoever that is. And having to go through this and say, well, we need this, this and this, and you just take out the room, you know, for, for error in the sense that. Well, I didn't know, uh, this, you know, it's incomplete, but I want to get on the agenda tomorrow, so on and so forth. Um, and I would like to reference in that application that we're going to do up the stuff that we require for site plan approval. Um, and if you'll also notice, at the end of each of those, so if you go clip over to page one sixty-one. The very bottom one M there is referring to the application. The zoning administrator may waive requirements listed above, subject to providing documentation of the reasoning for waiving said requirements to the planning commission. So that is essentially, I have the same concern like we had over in Article eleven, so. To me, we have those application requirements in there, they all need to be met.
Right.
Um, I don't know if we want to put the zoning administrator in a position where he or she is waiving requirements. That we are, that we are, that we, uh, on the planning commissioner are going to want to have. So I don't know if we want to change that sentence, if we want to add the planning commission in there. Seems we're going to have the authority on the site review and the special land use now. So, you know, uh, you know, because there, I mean, this is a very lengthy list, we don't need every single one of these for every application that we provide. So I don't mind someone being able to say that they don't need that, but I mean. I, I don't, I don't know if we want to be involved in that decision-making process or not, and it's like that, um. For the site review, it's the same, the same sentence at the very bottom is, is only straight or may waive requirements listed above. Like, how do you guys feel about that? Seth, generally, I mean.
What I typically see is, I'll see like a staff report and you're right, like sometimes there are, there's some, there are things in here that's not applicable for whatever reason. So when you see the staff report and you see, you know, whatever A, B, C and D in a brief analysis, the, the statement would just be not.
Okay.
But it would be necessarily waived, it would still come before you.
Okay.
Right, but that way you would know what isn't relevant for some reason or another.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess, so that my, my, my concern is that we leave it the way it is. We get a staff report from Cody and we go, well, no, actually we want that information, well, Cody's already told the applicant. That you don't need it, and now we could possibly have friction and confusion, so. I mean, and, and maybe, maybe we're being too technical or I'm being too technical here on, on that, and that's okay if I am. Uh, we can, you can tell me a flat kite and we move on.
No, I, I think we need to change that, so that we don't open ourselves up to something later.
You know, again, it's not that our zoning administrator wouldn't provide us that, it's the sequence of, it's, it's just like Article eleven. It's the sequence of events that we went through to get there and how that's going to be perceived by the applicant is what my concern, I guess, is. Uh, I guess in the sense I'm trying to get the P C to share the burden with the zoning administrator's office.
Right.
On, you know, the, the requirements that we need and, you know, helping the applicants understand that. Um, because, I mean, you look at, down at a lot of them, there's a lot of things that we don't necessarily need, uh, but, you know. So, so I don't know, I, I think we should add on there something about the planning commission, my personal, in my personal view.
Cause I mean, I want to, myself, I want to waive a lot of it, but like topography of two foot intervals. We could get site plans where those are just unreadable, you know, if you have. You don't know what's going on, but it's, they're hard, same with, uh, um. Location sizes and types of existing trees, five inches or greater in diameter, measured at, uh, one foot off the ground. Before and after proposed development, like, some of these ju- can just make site plan completely unreadable, so. Plus, to deal with site plans, let alone someone that's coming to see what's going on.
Okay. Alright, so I think we're all in agreement that we'll change that language, I think there is one, two, three, four, five, six places. Where, where I, where I saw that specifically regarding waiving the requirements. So why don't we attach something about, you know. That will add the piece, we'll add the planning commission on that, and I mean, that is a simple conversation that the zoning administrator and the, you know, presiding member of the commission can have. And then, you know, what do we need, what do we not need? Um, that also gives the, the commission members themselves an opportunity to say, well, no, I would like to see that. So please have them do that, you know, in that situation as well. And I will finesse the language with Seth as we're, as we're looking through that. And then we'll, we'll be sure to highlight that in January is something that we're going to come back to. And Cody, are you alright? I, I assume you're fine with that.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, I pretty much, I've called a few times, I've brought any of this up, I've called you about this anyway.
Yes, and, and, and I, I will, I will agree with Cody, anytime that there's been a question, he has always picked up the, the phone and asked, do you think we're going to need that, yes or no? Um, and generally between the two of us, we just take care of it so that when you guys get here, you have everything you need. Or, or hopefully have.
You're such a wonderful chair.
No, we, we, team effort, team effort. Um, yes, go ahead Claudia.
Uh, on page one sixty-two.
Mm-hmm.
If you go down to P.
Yeah.
You need to capitalize P for parking.
Yeah.
Wow.
Parking spaces.
Okay.
I think that M T type should be taken out.
What's that?
And on one sixty-two, S M T, speaking of like the landscape plan and locations of trees. Are we really concerned about types that much? Cause most are especially is, if we're, we talk about green screen, we specify it needs to be evergreen.
Uh, I would actually, I would push back on that in the sense that, so just an example would be. Like, uh, the gas stations that we just approved, so we wanted the evergreens because that's solid on that one property line. But we could have just as easily attached, well, we would like some, you know, uh, smaller bushes of some kind on the, you know, outer, um, towards the intersection or whatever. Uh, that's just such a busy intersection that we didn't do that, so in that situation, we would say, no, we want you to plant this type of. Landscaping because it is, you know, small to the ground and doesn't get big, so it's not going to obstruct vision, so I would think that we would want to keep that there.
But isn't this for existing already on the property, not one we're buying them they need as a condition?
I mean, I, I do think that that also still is the same, same form of relevancy because, I mean, we're gonna look at a site plan and. Are they surrounded by trees that, you know, we think they need to remove because of vision or, you know, adjacent uses and stuff like that, so. I mean, I don't think it has to be super. Super crazy, but I do think it helps you, especially when you're talking about like stuff in our mixed-use districts. I, I think it's important to know what's on the lot. So we can assess that as to whether or not that's compatible with other adjacent uses. Did I sway you Cody or whatever?
I can go either way on it. I'm just saying, like, some of these lots.
Sure.
You said something about T?
Uh, it's same thing, types of existing trees, five inches greater diameter.
Okay.
I, I would honestly think to leave it in there and that is always something to where, you know, the planning commission can just waive that requirement. If we, if we see fit, but I could easily see the one in a thousand situation where we would want that information. So I, I, I personally think we should just leave them.
And in that same. Paragraph or sentence, if you go down here where it says, why don't you propose shrubs, we need to move the comma.
Okay, that's just a little typo there. Uh, so in thirteen oh four, we've already touched on the fact that we're gonna change that over. Um, so the next big portion in section thirteen is. Uh, pertaining to the zoning board of appeals and their, I guess, authorities.
Hmm.
And then thirteen oh five, which is variance and appeals. Um, so I spoke with Claudia who is our liaison that is on the ZBA, uh, herself. Um, and there's several tricky, um, to say the least, wordings here.
Yes.
Um.
Very much so.
Or in regards to, you know, how the ZBA, again, it's related to that, those steps that we have to take. To get where we need to go and some of it contradicts the zoning ordinance itself, and then some of it contradicts. You know, almost would supersede going to the planning commission in the first place, which we, which we don't want to do. Um, so if it's okay with everybody and Claudia, i- if you would like, we can go through this now. Uh, but what I think we should do is have the attorneys review eleven, twelve, and then. Probably all of thirteen, I mean specifically though, uh, thirteen oh five to the end. Uh, for just the process and procedure to make sure that we're not contradictory of ourselves. Um, and then Claudia and I both have some specific comments. Seth, that we can direct to you just so we can get clarification on that we're reading it correctly.
Yeah, I'm sending an email here to myself.
Okay.
Uh, article eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and then specifically thirteen oh four.
Thirteen oh five.
There's nothing about that.
And I know Claudia had some specific questions, being on the ZBA herself. Uh, that we, we were just trying to, you know, seek, seek some, I guess, clarification on.
Right, so that would be, um, page one sixty-nine. When we look at general authority.
And if you want Claudia, we can get those all typed up and send them to Seth and then have them just take a look, or if you want, we can go through them now. It's totally up to you.
I think there's gonna be so much.
Okay, yeah, your list, the list, the list was long.
Yeah, the list is long. It is, it is confusing and then like. On this one where we look at page one sixty-nine and the thing I have marked, we have to flip over to page one seventy-six.
Yeah, so there were definitely some, like I said, there were inconsistencies between how it reads in the beginning. And then how it reads at the end for final approval. So I really would like the attorneys just to go through, make sure that we have that process listed effectively and efficiently and correctly. And then, uh, what we'll do is we'll put all of those questions. Um. In a memo to the attorney's office, so they know exactly what we're gonna look at, and then we'll provide that memo in January to you guys. Uh, so that you can follow along with the, with the answers that we get from the attorney's, attorney's office. Is that?
That helps me a lot.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, that definitely helps you. Is that okay with everybody on that? Um, just because that is so specific to the ZBA, which other than Claudia, none of us are a part of. Right? Right, I'm not forgetting you Barb, are you?
No, I'm, I'm on board of review.
Okay, that's, that's the other one you're on, okay, I've got you. Wonderful. Okay. Um. So that is all I have there. Um. The only other article we haven't reviewed is article three, and that is the table of the permitted uses and special land uses. Um, you know, it's getting on to eight thirty. Um, I think what I would like to do, um, let's just actually go into that real quick and I'll just. Run through, I guess, kind of, kind of a couple of quick concerns and give you an example of what we're looking at.
You said three?
Yep, article three, that's gonna be page eight, beautiful. Alright, so if you take a look at our entire, uh, table here of permitted uses. Two pages, pages eight and nine. Theoretically, if it's listed on the table. It should be listed in section, article four, as a section number with specific standards of some, of some fashion. That is not always the case.
Right.
And I know Tony, you had pointed that out at the, at the last meeting. Um, and then there are times where there's standards listed in article four, but it's not actually on the table. So I think what I would like to do, um, because that's all encompassing of, of the entire zoning ordinance itself. I would like everybody, uh, to just take a look at article three and then take a look at article four. And just kind of, you know, for your, for your own personal reference, I guess, you know, look at what we have as a special use and a permitted use. And ask yourself, well, do, should we have that listed differently? You know, so for instance, you know, our gun range here. We have listed on the table, outdoor, indoor, special use is in R R A O S only. It's permitted use in mixed-use, enterprise zone, and industrial, but we don't have any standards. For that period. So we would be looking at two things there. Do we want the indoor to be a special use as well? And then do we need some standards, even though, even if it's a permitted use, or even if it is, if we end up going changing it to a special use, do we want to have, you know, what standards do we want to have there?
Yeah.
So that's kind, that's probably the trickier of them, so you have three things you're looking at there. Uh. But if we can all maybe do that, uh, between now and when we meet in January. I think that we can probably, you know, knock out those inconsistencies pretty quickly. I mean, I don't think that there's probably, there's probably what? About eight or nine Claudia that I can think of. I know that you pointed out to me. Uh, you know, Cody has pointed out a couple, you know, he had, he had mentioned, I think at the meeting before last, that we probably need to get some standards for an indoor gun range. Um, and depending on what type of standards we have, I think dictates whether or not we change that to a special land use or a permitted use. You know, the more specific, uh, you are on your standards, the more I feel like that leans towards a special land use. The more generalized you are, that's more of a permitted use where you just have to, you know, you know, meet. You know, less restrict, I, 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 less restrictive standard.
And that one specifically, uh, like, it just always seemed crazy, I mean, I think I, in that initial list I sent you, it's crazy to me that. Indoor gun ranges are permitted, but indoor recreation, like gyms are special.
Right.
Right.
Like that seemed nuts.
Right.
Right, so great example of, of an inconsistency in, between two different types of recreational use, so. Um, and again. We're not gonna get this one hundred percent, guys, but I mean, uh, I feel very confident with what we got going on, that we are gonna be in very good shape here.
There's also some inconsistencies, like the table is in alphabet order, and then you go over to the standards.
Yeah, yeah, Tony, Tony had mentioned that, uh, you know, so.
They're not.
Um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna get all this stuff together and I'm probably gonna lose what little hair I have left making this list. And, uh, you know, hopefully you guys won't beat me up too bad, cause I miss a whole bunch of stuff. And, uh, in January, we'll go through and we'll have the three separate lists to work off of. Typos, we're gonna take care of those. We don't have to do a notice for those, at least that's what, uh, the attorneys have told us. And then we'll have, you know, actual text amendments where we're changing language based on, you know, policy. And then we'll have anything that we want to, I guess, add in for lack of a better, better term, or, or change specifically. Any other questions on that stuff?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, Barb, I lost my agenda. What's next on the agenda? Well, I feel like we got one more thing we need to do.
We do, uh, the date.
Okay, so planning, uh, next item is gonna be planning commission meeting dates. Uh, everybody should have got, uh, a copy of that in their packet. I mean, cheat over here and look at, Kevin.
A lot of meetings.
Uh, it is a lot of meetings. So last year, you remember when we did this, I thought, well, let's see if we can't get away with, I think it was either six or six.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was, that was, that was foolish thinking, uh. I did not anticipate having to get in and do, uh, this. Thorough of, you know, text amendment and just looking at different stuff. Uh, we've already talked about a couple of different ordinances that we're gonna need to incorporate that, you know, have recently popped up on the radar. Um, and then we also have a large amount of pending applications out, you know, um, so we did, I think, what, five this year? I think we did six last year. We have what, four on the books right now, potentially, I mean, we'll, we'll see if they all come, come forward, but, um. So I think having, having that many meetings is a good idea. That way the applicants know when they can get on the agenda. Um, if we don't have any pressing business, and right now I can't see how that's not gonna be for at least the first six months. Uh, we can always cancel, cancel that meeting if we don't have, have, have any, any business to discuss. Um. There is one change there, so I, I decided with the way the June meeting fell this year. Being a little bit earlier, I decided to have our July meeting one week later, about ten days later, actually, it's a, it's a, it's a full week later. Uh, for two reasons, one, that'll give us two mini breaks, considering that we're gonna have the scheduled ten meetings. So you'll have like six weeks between the June and August meeting, and then I think seven weeks between the August and the September meeting. Uh, so, you know, plan your vacations in July, you know, that, you know, I mean, that, that kind of thing, uh, it's just something that. You know, we always traditionally have met on the fourth Tuesday, regardless. Um, so I just thought it was a way to kind of break that up and give us two mini breaks. In lieu of having that, you know, only having the nine meetings and having three separate, you know, sixty day breaks or whatever. Um, in case you were wondering why I did that, maybe didn't.
That March was my.
There's a gap. That's why. Yeah, so.
That March was my, might be a problem for me because one of the nights, the board of review has to be here in the evening.
Okay.
And I think it's usually around that time, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have to talk to Michelle.
What we can do, so.
Sure how it's gonna work out.
What I think we should do is we should just, I mean, if you guys are okay with it, we'll just voice vote to agree to these meeting dates. That way they can be put on the website and we had, uh, to move our February one. Not this year, but last year, because they had the special election, so, I mean, we, we would, we just post, you know, well in advance that we're doing that, uh. Is there any more discussion on meeting amount, date, you know? Alright, uh. Oh, let's just voice vote, all, all in favor of, uh, setting these meeting dates on the township website for twenty twenty-six? Aye?
Aye.
Wow, okay, all opposed? Alright, now eyes have it then. Not sure that's exactly how I should have done that, but you know when I'm tired, so.
Okay.
My, my apologies for the, for the procedural police. Alright, open public comment time.
Your turn.
Something about signs, postcard and state, what are the signs where their truckers that are pulling in? They're coming down our street, a guard near South Gardener. They get almost down to the end and have them back, all the way back. I don't know what, what, what more they could do, but.
Okay.
Who's guarding?
I'm a private police, I have.
Yeah, well, it's a pretty good sign, but it's wrecked, but I think the G B S is giving them the right one from their making our street.
Yeah. What is your name? I think it was a sign faces the road instead of sideways, they don't see the sign.
No.
Until they're. Yeah, cause it used to be at the other entrance and it was turned, you know.
Yeah.
It's the, uh, per- parallels with the entrance, and now it's parallel with the road.
Is that something that you, you've gotten some complaints about Cody? You seem to.
Uh, I've just spoken to Pam about it a couple of times.
Alright.
I think another person came in, uh, just saying, you know, why I go outside, I keep coming down Gardner.
Okay.
I got stuck one day behind them backing out onto West Michigan, right as I was getting out of work, you know, that's a busy time of day.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to back out on that street, okay.
I had one the other night, it was seven o'clock at night, it was dark, and you had to back all the way back down. I wasn't, I don't think the driver liked it very well, and we don't find it very well, but if he does, they'll come down there and they're ruining our street.
Yeah.
What did you say your name was?
Pam Biggs.
Oh, Pam Pickett. Okay, thank you Pam.
Other than that, you guys were in a very good job.
Thank you. Alright, seeing no other public comment, we'll close at eight twenty-eight. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be planning commission member time. Uh, Tony, you wanna start us off?
Um, I just wanna say, good work everybody and. Keep it up and thank you for sticking with us tonight.
Kristy McKay?
Don't have much to say other than good work once again. Good job.
Mr. Wilson?
There. The break we have, it's, and then that'd be broken up with going through this, but that's.
Sure.
It's okay, that's what they call homework.
Right, there you go, absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Or will we happen to be meeting people? No, no, we won't, right.
We got a week.
No. Because this is the meeting before that. Thanks, yeah, have, having a good turkey day, if you like turkey.
Commissioner Brown?
Um, I would like to say we're doing a great job. I think we're really moving forward, getting things done. Um, it's a lot of work and thank you everyone for all your efforts there, because it does, this takes a group, it takes the two of you to do this. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, we'll see you in January.
There you go. Uh, I would just like to thank the commission for the opportunity to leave the group again this year. Uh, I think that we have really, really come together as a group and are, are really, really elevated. Uh, both the expectations for ourselves and, and what the residents can expect from us too as, as a group, so, uh. I couldn't be happier to have had the opportunity, um, you know. The only thing that's guaranteed, uh, seems like in this township is, uh, turn, turnover and change, so. You know, hopefully we'll all still be here and, uh, you know, on the theme in January, uh, but everybody is doing a great job and, uh. I really couldn't be, couldn't be more proud to leave, leave the group this year, so, uh, with that, happy holidays. Enjoy your break. Don't completely disconnect. Don't completely disconnect from this, cause we're gonna be right back into it in January, but, uh. Uh, the other thing I don't think we discussed on there, I don't know if I had it on the agenda or not, was, uh, a kind of a de, a de facto deadline to get. Get your list back if you wanted to submit anything else to me. Uh, if we can just call it January first on that, I would appreciate it, that'll give me a couple of weeks to put everything together for the agenda for our January meeting. Um, you know, but I have most everybody's list in the meeting minutes and everything else, but if there's specific things that we either haven't covered or you notice. If you could try and get those to me, to me by then, that would be helpful. And that being said, I will move to adjourn the meeting. For look at eight thirty-one.